Ready. All right, call phone is on me with the Monday, January twenty 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 five to order. Call please.
Mayor Graffino, trustee Christensen, trustee Gately, trustee Lowery, trustee Nudgevedge, trustee Salazar.
Here.
All right. Thank you. Audience comments. We have people signed up like to speak. Come on up the podium, state your name and address and.
My name is Caleb Bossman, eight oh five Doral Ling. The comment that I have or question would be about the property that is located in between Oberweis and Sharon. That's online item number four for the tree removal. I would like to have the no trespassing signs removed so that my child can play in there. They went up incredibly quickly over, I believe, a complaint that our kids were in there. And we are just looking to get the no trespassing signs taken down. That is it.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else speak? Okay. Trustee comments. Okay, I'm in the morning, Stephen, discussion.
Thank you. Item number one is a new liquor license. This is for El Cornell Restaurant on two hundred Butterfield Road. They are requesting a small restaurant license because they're less than two thousand square feet. So that's a class B, which allows them to still serve full liquor. So wine, spirits and beer. This is a new restaurant. We've had some turnover there. This is replacing the previous real menace restaurant, which will have their license on an upcoming agenda for removal. As you know, we typically go to the village board anytime there's a new liquor license request for a restaurant. They have submitted their paperwork and have indicated that they do not want video gaming at this time.
Yep. All right. Item two.
Sorry. Item number two tonight is regarding the promenade two. The next two items on the committee of the whole agenda are actually going to be handled by Nathan. Who's going to go over the new development of promenade two over off of Randall and Orchard area. And right now it's a PUD and it's an annexation agreement amendment. So Nathan's going to start with the PUD.
Okay, so this particular request covers both the property at one thousand Kilbury Lane, which is the My Place Hotel and lot four, which is the property east of the mixed use building. So there is. There is the hotel lot. There is the current mixed use building. That is the vacant lot and for reference, that would be turf room there. So it counts. It includes these three lots. They're all zoned B two commercial. This area was originally approved back in two thousand and five as part of the Randall Highlands PUD. It has been amended several times that PUD and the annexation agreement have both been amended several times over the years. The two most recent in two thousand and seventeen, there was an amendment that created these three lots and approved the hotel. And then in two thousand and twenty, there was an amendment that approved the mixed use building on lot three. So going forward, the applicant has two requests. One would be to build a second mixed use building on lot four. And the other is to convert the My Place Hotel, which is not doing well into independent senior living. So the first one for the senior living. That is a special use in the B two district. So the amendment would grant that. There's no external changes proposed outside of the signage. The big yellow and red My Place Hotel sign would go away, but other than that, the outside of the building would remain the same. Inside, there would be some changes. So currently there are sixty three hotel rooms. That number would come down a bit as several of the rooms would be taken out for community spaces. You know, amenities for the residents. The rooms would generally be the same size. The existing hotel rooms have kitchenettes in them. They were designed for no longer term living. So it'd be a maximum of, I think, sixty rooms, sixty one rooms. So a few rooms taken out, but all the changes shown inside. The second part of the approval would be for a new mixed use building on lot four. This would be a mirror image to the building that's out there. So if you look at the overall site plan, it would be this building here. Could line up with the existing building. This is where Kremo Coffee is right here on the end of that mixed use building. So it would kind of flank the street and line up with that. It would include thirty units and a ground floor of two thousand square feet of commercial space. Architecturally, it would be designed to match the building, the existing mixed use building out there to kind of bookend the street as you come in. So you know, similar styles, similar materials. Landscaping wise, also very similar. Some nice landscaping along Ritter Street. The commercial area does have an outdoor patio area. So if they did get a restaurant in there, they could have some outdoor seating in that area. See. So there's some, some of the layouts of the interior of the units and the retail space. The planning commission met on January seventh and held a public hearing on the PUD amendment. They recommended approval with these conditions listed here. These generally comply with the conditions of the last amendments. Nothing out of the ordinary there. There are a couple of code exceptions being called out in this building, if I should mention. One is the building height for the B two district is thirty five feet. Close building is forty feet. Again, this matches the building that was done on lot three, which also had that exception. The existing PUD has an extra setback in it, a step back setback, which hasn't been used on any of the lots, but it's in the language. So I'm not sure why it was there. I don't know the history of that, but it wasn't used on lot three. So this would take that out. And then the only other code exception is not having landscape island on the north. But that also matches the other lots and trying to maximize parking. So with that, Kevin Dermody from the development is here. If anybody has any questions for him. And we are looking for feedback tonight.
Mark.
Questions?
I got nothing. I'm good. Jason.
I'm good. Looks good.
No, I liked when it came before that the building is already there is very attractive looking and it's going to mirror that. I think it's going to look well. I think it's going to look good.
Thank you. Yeah, it looks good. Thanks, Kevin.
I just can't believe it was twenty years ago that I was originally here for the original annexation. Thanks. Anything else?
Nope. So item three.
So item number three is regarding the same development, but now because it's part of an annexation agreement, Nathan is going to talk about the other process that we have to go through, which is an amendment to the annexation.
So the annexation agreement is still in effect. I think it's, it's almost to the end. It's got more months or something on it, but it is still in effect. So we have to amend that as well. So Kevin has done a draft, which is in your packet. It addresses, you know, approving the mixed use building and as well as a few other things. This would come at the second meeting in February and would require an official public hearing at the board to change. Kevin, if you want to add anything.
Yeah, it's really very similar to the last one, actually.
All right, thank you. Right, moving on to the board, Steve.
I'm going to have Nathan's going to put a picture up on the screen so everyone can kind of get their bearings. The next item on the agenda tonight is a discussion about a invasive species plant removal and tree removal process in a, in a patch of land between Sharon and Oberweis on the east side of town. So right there, there are three lots and Nathan's got a picture of it on the screen. There's a total of three parcels, two of them that are smaller and they're along Oberweis. And those were actually dedicated to the village after the Banbury Ridge subdivision was completed. And for whatever reason, twenty plus years ago, they decided to donate those pieces of land probably because they were undevelopable to the village. The village accepted them. The village then also accepted the larger parcel to the bottom there, which fronts, as you can see, front Sharon. Sharon Lane. That is part of the Pine Creek three subdivision. When that subdivision went in, that, that piece of land was plotted as wetland detention area. And it's actually covered by an SSA, which the village has an active SSA on Pine Creek number three. So that basically what we're saying is, is on the first two small parcels that were dedicated to the village, they have conservation easements. The larger wooded lot there has a wetland detention designation. So it was designed to either for future stormwater or to, maybe it was a low spot in the development. So it's where they intended for drainage to go at some point. But over the years, that patch of woods has grown with larger invasives and trees underbrushed that have grown up inside of it. There are currently no trespassing signs that were put up in two thousand and twenty three. We did receive a complaint about accumulated materials and activity going on in the wooded area. We put no trespassing signs up with the intent of coming back one day with an idea or a plan to see if we can open up. It's wearing a unique situation. Village does not typically own land like this that is in a neighborhood nor that is wooded. A lot of times if we end up owning a piece of common area from a subdivision, it'll usually be a detention basin or an open piece of land. So with that being said, we were approached by a group of volunteers that work with the Forest Preserve of Kane County. And they go around and they actually clear patches of invasive. So they go into these wooded areas. They find unique spots. In this case, I think maybe one of the volunteers actually lives in the neighborhood. So they saw this and they said, hey, you know what? We'd love to come over with a group of volunteers and take out invasive species like buckthorn and all of the underbrush that shouldn't be there so that the natural trees and vegetation from Illinois will actually grow stronger and grow back. With that idea, they, we started talking about the idea of connecting Sharon and Oberweis with a, with a mulch path from the grindings that they get from some of the underbrush. And then the idea would be is to remove the no trespassing signs. Put a sign up that maybe says something like natural area, no dumping or something like that, and just leave it open. So people can actually walk through the woods and interact with the woods. In the agreement that we're working with this volunteer group, I'm going to ask Brian to talk a little bit about it, but basically the village, what we'd be doing is in, they would sign a waiver and then the village would have our staff go out there with the heavy equipment like the chippers. They would be able to sign a waiver to use things like our chainsaws. We would work with them and all their stuff out to the curb, chip it. And then they would come back and do some herbicide into actually try to keep anything that they cut from growing back. But I'm going to, I'm going to let Brian talk about it's, it's basically a year or two process. And then we do have the volunteers here if they would like to speak as well. But Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, we just basically do a, you know, a small hands on. You know, give everybody a test and stuff about the safety of the tools and stuff like that. You know, obviously we would operate the chipper, the staff, the volunteers would haul the stuff to the, to the road and we would chip it all so that, you know, the safety all falls on us. We would also have staff there to be at the event anytime volunteers are working. Just, you know, the thought of the path would be a nice way to utilize. They had, they also talked about doing some native plantings. So if there was money in the budget for some stuff, we could actually plant some native plants in there that would thrive and help the area. So it just, it's removing and replacing. You know, so we just, we thought it was a good idea to utilize, you know, and then clearing it, obviously. You know, there's coyotes and different things in the area would just maybe open up that area where it wouldn't be, you know, so inviting to them. So we'd worked with the volunteers, you know, discussing different options and it took a few meetings, but now I think we have a good plan to move forward.
I think the big thing too is over the years, we've had people call in here and there about either our trees going over their property line. So we try to cut those back along those homes that are right up against the wooded area. But it just gives us a better opportunity to, once you, once you're able to trim some of those invasive and get it out of there to maintain it going forward. It gives the public the opportunity to utilize a unique space in the community. The big thing for us too is that, like I said before, we don't have, this is a unique situation. We really just don't have a lot of, of land like this. So we just wanted the feedback from the board to see if that was okay to to kind of open it up and open it up and let the public walk through it and.
I'm going to have Jeff for Dale. Can you come up? Just give us a couple of minutes. I went out to their sites this summer and I was quite impressed with what they did. I didn't know they did any of this. And as a volunteer group, it's quite a thing you're doing throughout the county as well, but just kind of talk about why you do it and what you're looking for and what you're hoping the end result will be.
I'm Dale Swanson. I live on a right over there, that beige roof, two oh eight Jessica Court. Jeff and I have been, I started out working with Jeff in the forest preserve about five, five years ago, maybe six. Removing invasive species and like you said, Steve, repopulating with natives. One of the things we want to do is, is it's, it's an ongoing battle and always will be trying to get, get a hand on invasive species. But we do want to open it up for kids to play in. It's a huge, huge thing. Get people back into nature. If we can clear that area out and get it looking native again and have people seeing what a native area looks like. They may want to do it elsewhere too. So. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do. So who's going to use the chainsaws? Our, our staff or you? Do you know how to use it? Okay. You're not going to like. You know what I mean? Because that it is kind of tricky if you never use.
We've been trained by the forest preserve. So we use their saws. We go through a training process once every year or two.
Say you know how to use it, I take your word.
Including, including bleed control, safety precautions.
I had a question about, Brian or Steve mentioned that you're going to be using an herbicide. Is that, is that, you know, a treatment that then the area is off limits for a period of time? Or is it a natural herbicide or what is it that you're going to be using?
Use herbicide in a number of ways. You're probably thinking about spraying it all over the place. We don't do that. We use applicators. We cut the tree and while the stump is still fresh, we dab an applicator around the rim and it kills it to the root.
Okay, thank you.
Does it go anywhere else?
So, so the day I met, the day I saw him out in Upper Tanner, they were looking for like oak trees and stuff and it's like I said, and oblivious when I walked through the woods or go out that way, but there is, you know, oak trees that are six inches tall and they had a bunch of scrub stuff going all over and their team would flop them. I didn't see any chainsaws there, but they cut the small stuff, dragged it to a pile. They'd take like a toothpaste type thing with a roller on it. They just hit the little stump with the herbicide and that was it. So I mean, it's quite a quite a good thing you're doing. So I think it's good. I think it's a good match for the village. And especially your neighbor there on top of it, but that's always been kind of a weird parcel. And like I said, to have the kids be able to play or people walk from, you know, Oberweis Drive South or whatever through it. You know, it'd be, I think it's a win win. So.
Well, that's my, my neighborhood and I'm very much in favor of it. I live on Pine Creek, so.
I think the big thing too is that we'll put some signage out. We actually started designing some signage that will, that give residency opportunity to that. They can see it and see what's happening. So all of a sudden, we don't want to show up there with, you know, ten volunteers and four public works guys, big trucks and start tearing through things. So this way it says, hey, this is a project that's upcoming. They can get information. They can call the village and ask questions about it. We thought that'd be a good way to, and that was one of the suggestions that the volunteer group made.
We want to make it better.
Then when the project's completed, you take down the no trespassing signs?
Yeah, I think once we would take the, once that's done, it probably before the second year, I mean, we could talk that, I would think that it would be done right away. So for instance, we're thinking about doing this in the spring. I think we take the no trespassing signs down once everything's taken down and cleared. But they will be back at some point the following year because you're killing the stuff that's there, but you're not necessarily killing the stuff that hasn't grown yet. Correct?
Yeah, it's going to be an ongoing battle. I mean, you've got honeysuckle in there and the birds will eat, eat the berries and poop seeds out. That's one way that they disperse and then you've got a seed bank from the berries that have been falling on the ground already. So they're going to keep popping up and you have to keep after it, but I don't see any reason why that has to close off the area.
Yeah, no, I think we'd be fine to have it open by then if you, unless you had any thoughts.
I think it's a great idea. Absolutely.
Well, Brian's staff is already, like I said, they already got some signs going and I think we're, we're trying to think of maybe something that says natural area open, you know, open public or whatever, something that tells people that they're allowed to cross through it.
All right.
Do you consider it a park? Zach, could you consider it a park?
I guess by lot, by in theory, I mean, we don't really maintain a lot of parks here. The park district does, but I guess it would be similar to a park in a way.
Probably that the conservation designation kind of sets like what can be done in there. So as you know, as far as like, like building anything that's like art, that was, yeah, that was like kind of a no, no. So at least, you know, in, in that area. So, but I mean, just for general use. Yeah. I mean, that's, you know, kind of park open space. Yes.
Just to have a sign out in front or something. So people realize like, hey, this is actually a normal thing. Yes.
I think the big thing too is putting our logo on it so people know it's okay. So it says, you know, natural area, you know, open, and then it's got village. So they know, oh, this is a public space I can now access.
Right. All right. Thanks. Okay, we're moving on to item five.
Last item on the agenda is our six month financial update. Our finance director, Jason, is going to go through, basically this is kind of the precursor to our budget process. As you know, we start our budget process internally in January and February, we present our first budget numbers to the board in March and then again in April, and then with final approval in May. Our budget year starts June one. So what Jason does is anytime that you are starting the process internally, we obviously are looking at where our revenues are today. Where we projecting to be for end of year expenditures, what we have in the pipeline that hasn't been spent this year. What we expect to start to see for the upcoming years. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jason Paprock, our finance director.
Thank you. So I just have a few quick slides we'll run through. A lot of this stuff will get more into come March when I actually get through the budget presentations. But first I'll just hit on some, some major revenues. The first one I want to go over is sales tax revenue. So this is our general fund's largest revenue source, just under fifty percent of our money that comes into the general fund is from sales tax. This graph I'm showing you here is the first, the last five years, year to date. So this is the money we've received at mid, mid year. The last five years, you see, sales tax revenue went up significantly those first three years. Some of the reasons for that is the cannabis tax in two thousand and twenty coming on. And then the leveling the playing field act in two thousand and twenty one, where that took a lot of the stuff that was called use tax, moved it over to sales tax. Revenue. So we saw significant increases there. The, this year we budgeted six point three million dollars in revenue. And that was down because this is when we were thinking that the grocery tax was going to go away from the state. But that ultimately didn't go away. So currently we're projecting seven point one million, just under seven point two million dollars of money coming in, which is a little more than last year. But related to that, the grocery tax that will go away January first, two thousand and twenty six. We're expecting that sales tax revenue would go down anywhere from six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars annually because this grocery tax going away. Even though it's going away at the state level municipalities, we can adopt the local ordinance saying we want to keep that one percent grocery tax on the books and get that money. If we wanted to do that, we'd have to file an ordinance with the Illinois Department of Revenue by October first of this year for that tax to be effective January first, twenty six, so we would not lose any money. We plan to discuss this further during the budget process over the next couple of months of whether, what direction we want it to go with this grocery tax with it going away January first. Another major revenue sources at the general fund is income tax. As you can see from that graph, income tax has gone up significantly every year, the last five years. This is distributed on a per capita basis, meaning all the money comes into the state, the state divvies it out by population throughout the state. With this year, we budgeted two point eight million dollars. Right now we're currently projecting three million seventy eight thousand. So this is about a little bit more than last year. Last year our actual was three million, three hundred and thirty nine thousand or three hundred or three million thirty nine thousand. So this is one we just see keep going up and up every year. A lot of the reasons for that are just the income tax returns on both the corporate individual level just keep going up. So this money keeps going back to the municipalities. Use tax is one that has kind of gone up and down over the last past years. And a lot of that is because of some of the laws that have gone into effect. If you go back to two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and eighteen, a lot of the online retailers were having to start, start charging use tax on any of your online purchases. So we saw a use tax go up significantly statewide. And then in two thousand and twenty one, they passed the leveling the playing field act, which took a lot of that stuff that was previously use tax and pushed it over to sales tax. So again, then we saw kind of a decrease in, in use tax. Recently there was a, another amendment to that leveling the playing field act that's going to go into effect January first of twenty five this year, which they're projecting use tax to go down again. We'll see some decreases in use tax for the next year. But that should kind of result in increases in sales tax. So hopefully we, we even, even out with that. This year we did budget six hundred and ninety four thousand dollars. Our current year projection, six hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars. So again, we're seeing that kind of decrease over these years as things become more sales tax and move away from being used tax. Building permits, building permits vary year to year. Generally we budget anywhere from three to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's kind of just the normal base. That's kind of the money that comes in when you take out special projects. As you could see last year, our sale, our actual was just under nine hundred thousand dollars, I think eight hundred and ninety eight or eight hundred and ninety eight thousand. This year we're projecting about six hundred and thirty eight thousand. We had a couple of major building remodels that brought in some large permit fees. But again, it should be significantly over budgeted just by some of these big major projects. On the expense side, some of the major expenditures we've seen this year are the police pension contributions, one point eight million dollars. Contracted inspection services, we budgeted one forty. We spent a hundred and two thousand so far year to date. Generally if that, if that line item goes over budget, that just means that much more building permit revenues coming in because those are kind of correlating. Dispatch services, we budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand. We spent two hundred and forty thousand. Then tree replacement or tree replacements and trimming, we budgeted a hundred and sixty four. So far we spent a hundred and thirty seven. We did have a budgeted transfer to capital projects fund of four hundred thousand dollars. Basically every year we get to the end and we see how much revenue is more than the expenditures that we had. And we say, okay, we have additional money to transfer over to capital. So we'll revisit that again this year and see how much additional money. Our fund balance at the beginning of the year was nine point three million dollars. This equates to sixty four point nine percent of our budgeted transfers and expenditures. Our policy is forty to fifty percent. So we're well above that on the general fund reserve.
One real quick thing I'd like to say about the, the capital transfer that we do. I mean, it's something that we're proud of. Think of it like an impact fee protection. So what it does is when we're taking our revenues in for the capital programs, a lot of that money is, is directly to two things. Now the public works facility debt, which is the whole point of the referendum we had. And then the rest of the money that we take in through the sales tax or through utility taxes is enough to cover the road program, but there isn't a ton of money after that. So putting money in from the general fund every year with our surpluses to capital help us when we have projects that come up that are a million dollars or two million dollars that like an impact just showed up and you're like, okay, well this sword just collapsed. We have to. And so it helps us build that fund for those reasons.
Moving on to the two TIF funds, the United TIF, our property taxes here was nine hundred and ninety three thousand dollars, which is a significant improvement over last year. As a lot of those Opus Valley Green area buildings start coming online. This was up five hundred and thirty four thousand from last year in tax money that came in. We did have that budgeted transfer of seven hundred thousand or removed money from the Route thirty one TIF over to the United TIF. Help with that fire district land swap. Also regards to that, we had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar DCO grant, which got applied to that. So save some of that TIF money as part of that land swap. On the Route thirty one TIF side, we have a property tax revenue of just under four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and ninety six. And this was up ninety three thousand dollars from last year. There was some additional development in there and I can't remember which project. Salem Park eighty. Yep, Park eighty eight. So we saw some increment in that tip as well. This tip does expire this year, August twenty five. So we'll have to figure out kind of what to do or how to close this tip out. We will have some money. So whether we move it into the United TIF and kind of continue with some economic developments, or we look at some capital projects that we can do within the TIF. So there'll be some discussions later as to what the future plans to close this tip out. Just moving into the capital projects fund, our non-home rule sales tax. This rate did change to one percent from the half percent on July first. Again, this tax doesn't apply to vehicle sales, groceries or certain medical items. We budgeted two million, six hundred and ninety one thousand this year. Um, we budgeted two million six hundred ninety-one thousand this year. Um, we're current projections were at two million seven seventy-one. So um, this revenue is coming in a, a lot higher than what we were thinking it was, uh, with this new rate change. Uh, in the capital projects fund, we also have utility tax or electricity tax and gas tax. Um, the telecommunications tax used to go to the uh, capital projects funds, but in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we moved that straight over to the um, general fund. Um, electricity tax revenue year to date, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, this is up slightly from last year. And on the gas tax side, seventy-two thousand, this is down slightly from last year. And these are very up and down revenues. They all depend on weather and things going on, rates charged. Um, some major projects in the capital projects fund. Um, the annual road program, we budgeted two million eighty-six thousand. I think year to date, we spent two million fifty, so right on target. And then the public works facility, um, design and management, construction management, we budgeted one million three sixty-five. We spent seven hundred twenty-one thousand so far. Um, we budgeted that four hundred thousand dollar transfer. For the past six years, we've put in twelve, twelve point seven million dollars from the general fund into the capital projects fund. Um, that's allowed us to get that reserve balance up to fourteen and a half million dollars at June first. We have no target reserve policy within this fund. Um, but a lot of that reserve that we've kind of built up over the years has been spent or will be spent on some things. Four and a half million dollars of it's going to go, um, to be used on the public works facility construction that we use another just under two point seven million to help pay off that police debt early. So a lot of that, that reserve that we built up June, uh, July first is, is basically gone or going away shortly. Um, we still have plenty of reserve in there for, for additional projects, but um, you know, that's where, you know, Steve mentioned those, um, those capital transfers we do kind of help us with these things where that four and a half million dollars we use for the, the public works uh, building, we're not actually taking out debt and paying interest on. On the water fund, uh, here's our water sales over the last five years. It's been pretty flat, even though the past two years we've um, increased rates. Um, this year we budgeted three million fifty-four thousand. Right now we're looking, we're about two million nine fifty-five up slightly from last year, even though we, um, increased rates twelve and a half percent as of June first. It just really depends on how much water, whether it's, it's seasonal, like with weather and are people watering? So even though we've increased rates twelve and a half percent, probably not going to see a twelve and a half percent uh, revenue increase uh, on it just because of how much water is being used or pumped. Um, some major uh, revenues and reserve in the water fund. Our SCADA system, six hundred thousand dollars budgeted. We're just getting ready to start, gets started. So we'll probably see a carryover there. And then started the central water tower. I know we know that's going to be a multi-year project. We budgeted about one million dollars in this current year. Um, the whole project just under seven point six million. A lot of it will be carried over to the next year. Uh, we have our debt, our principal interest payment of four hundred and ninety-four thousand. Um, that will go through twenty thirty-two. We had a reserve of nine million six hundred eighty-six thousand, uh, as June first in that reserve, in that fund. Um, but if you look at the current budget, we had budgeted to spend just under three point four million of it, um, in this current year. But then also we have that, the water tower, future capital, and then there's another bunch of other capital. You know, up near twelve million dollars over the next five years. So our current focus right now is looking at the water rates and making sure there's enough there for operating and capital needs. Um, they're just going to end on looking at water rates. Back in twenty-three, it presented a five-year fifty percent uh, increase. Currently we're in year two. The four hundred dollars and seventy-nine per thousand gallons. Um, there's possible needs just on the way the capital is to accelerate, to accelerate this. And maybe this might not be a five-year uh, plan anymore. This might be a, we might need to jump to the end, the five dot ninety-five next year. We're also looking at various things, uh, creative ways to try to pay for some of this capital, whether we charge a monthly capital fee on bills. Um, just kind of playing with some ideas right now, just to make sure that, you know, that we have enough money to make sure the water fund uh, keeps going.
I think with the water fund and the reason the water rates are coming back up, it's obviously a budget time. It makes the most sense to kind of look at that for next year. Uh, but what you have is E I has been working on a master water study for us and they're coming to a conclusion sometime at the end of spring, uh, early summer. Part of that is an actual rate study that they're doing based on, you know, I'm just going to make up number twenty million dollars worth of projects. They'll take that total number of projects over the next few years or whatever has to be done. And then they'll tell you what they think the rate should be to get there. We already had this plan in place, but now that we know the water tower expenses is higher than we anticipated. We now, uh, is, you know, it, it got to a good price for the sized tower we needed, but it took us a while to get there. So now that we're there, we know what it is. Now we know what our reserves will be. So Jason and I are talking about how can we at least bridge that gap between knowing that we have to rebuild that reserve a little bit? And knowing that we have a, a huge number of projects in the pipeline coming in the study.
So that's all I have tonight. Um, as I mentioned, in March, we'll come back with a lot more information regarding the budget and kind of where things are at. Um, but if there's any questions, go over or.
Oh, great.
That's good. Yep. All right. Well, I need a motion to adjourn the exec session to discuss pre-acquisitions.
Should do adjourn.
Second.
Oh, favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes the same, right? Good evening.